Uh, alright, so, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. No, I don't know that I need to use a gavel. I think if I talk loud enough, people will be quiet, right? Alright, alright, I'm calling the meeting to order. Uh, Village Clerk Schmidtky, if you could take roll call.
Trusty Vraski.
Here.
Chris Meyer.
Here.
Trusty Micho.
Here.
Trusty O'Connor.
Yes.
Trusty O'Reilly.
Yes.
Trusty.
Here.
Alright, uh, I'll hear, am I here too? Yes, I am here. Alright, great. Uh, let's all rise for pleasure.
Pleasure, Legion. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America is standing in recognition under God, in the physical, with the belief in justice and law.
Welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone. Um, the first thing we have on the agenda is the homeowners associations. Um, I see that Trusty O'Reilly is here. Uh, she is with Crete side. Uh, any, anything for the board?
Not a thing.
Um, anybody here from Eleanor Estate? Any, anyone from, from Eleanor Estates? No? Okay, the, the next item on the agenda, um, and somehow I'm out of order, is, uh, public comment. I will let you know that there were multiple public comments received in writing. Um, uh, Phil Goldberg, uh, regarding, uh, law enforcement and shots fired at Phillips Estates. Um, Magdalena Johnson regarding road maintenance, Allison LaCassio, the Checker Road traffic calming, Mark LaCassio Checker Road, uh, traffic calming, April Johnson, same thing. Um, Arlene, uh, Kating, uh, Checker Road traffic, uh, calming, and then Robert, uh, Crouppa. Uh, no, Norbert Crouppa regarding the, the Checker, uh, traffic calming that we'll be talking about tonight. Um, is there anyone in the audience here that has any public comment or online, uh, that would like to raise any public comment here? I take silence as no. Um...
May I ask a question, and it's more about my neighborhood? Are we keeping track of shots fired up in, in some way?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Cause I don't call anymore when I hear them. And I heard a whole lot of them Friday night.
Exactly. Okay.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you. Alright, um, uh, you know, we, we have a consent agenda, but one of the items that's on it, um, i- uh, is the, uh, the charity event, the, uh, the Skars and Morris Car Show, and, and we have a ch- uh, Chief Belinsky here tonight. And I didn't know if you wanted to say a few words before we actually go to the consent agenda.
Well, first of all, I say thank you for allowing myself and Bruce Peterson, or Bruce Southern Committee. It's kinda like a homecoming to me to some degree because Trusty O'Reilly from Buffalo Grove, who happens to serve as the chief there, and then the fire and police commissioner, Mr. Jackson, have an outstanding relationship with you in the past. We've been doing this car show for, uh, eleven, going on twelve years now, downtown Long Grove. And the cause is to help special needs people that have disability, both men, women, and children. So, the relationship between the Villager Police Department, Special Olympics, and the people from Long Grove with all your support has been tremendous. We've done extremely well. Last year was a banner year for us, and it's because of the support that we get from the board and the support that we get from the citizens in Long Grove and everybody else in its houses. So, we really cherish the relationship we have with you, and we look forward, hopefully with your approval, to have another banner year. Thank you.
Thank you for saying it, appreciate it. Um, also, we have, um, we're honored tonight to have Lieutenant Kaiser and Sheriff Idleberg here tonight. Do you have anything you want to share with us?
I wanted to say it's a pleasure to be here. My name is John Iver. I'm the sheriff of Lake County, and I'm here to support our partnership and us working together and serving this great community. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Anything else for us? Yep.
County board in the room.
Any questions for the sheriff's office?
Okay, Kevin. Okay.
Had a relatively quiet month since the last time that we shared a day, until last night. Uh, we had a burglary occur in the area of Hilltop in eighty-three. Uh, it's not quite the normal burglary that we've seen, and we're not quite sure when the actual burglary happened. Um, it happened sometime between seven in the morning and six at night. Right, and proceeds from the burglary were located in Long Grove.
Oh.
Still recommend, lock your doors. All those home security tips that we've gone over in the past, and please call the police when you hear something, hear something shot.
I don't mind. Well, no, just, just in my defense, I've lived there for thirty-five years, and maybe eight, ten years ago, we had been calling over and over, and it doesn't change. So, you kinda quit doing that. But I will, I will start calling you more often.
Where's it coming from, Bobby Soffey? From the, from the...
I, I'm, I, I, I'm not sure. Because there's, there's a lot of land to the south and a lot of land to the west.
Right, right, right. We're not terribly far, and maybe, maybe I had too many beers Friday night, I think.
Did you do it?
This happening after dark?
Hmm?
This happening after dark?
Oh, this is two, three.
Oh, okay.
Or, or at dawn.
So, it's probably not somebody target shooting in an open field at night?
It is, that's how I...
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, some of the belongings were recovered, um, in Long Grove.
Got it. Go ahead, yep.
Hi, Ms. Mara, welcome back from town. You're a pleasure to see everybody. I, I wanted to ask, so I'm noticing that there's a, a car issue that's been coming up a lot. Like, people are stealing cars from the driveway, hijacking somebody in the driveway. Is that something people need to be, uh, worried about?
Uh, it's something that you should always be concerned about. I, I wouldn't worry ourselves about it, um, but, uh, just make sure that you're aware of your surroundings, and, um, if you see somebody that you think is following you, call the police. So, we can come help investigate it. And, uh, um, you know, always have your phone in your hand. Don't leave your car running in your driveway. Uh, don't leave your car running outside, you know, so that you give someone an opportunity to take it.
Do you feel that those burglaries and the car thefts have been up a little bit, or...
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, not area, but yes, in, in the county, absolutely.
Mara, don't jinx us, please. It's been for a little while. We've been good here, so.
And a little follow-up, which, uh, we've been talking about, we've also were able to identify people are leaving their key fobs in their car. Please don't do that. It's easy for, we all lose our keys at times, wondering where the keys are, leaving it in the car, and don't have to worry about it. But, you know, there are people who are out there, uh, going through the community, pulling the doors, the hatch, latches on the doors, and they open up, cause the key fob is in there. Now they have their car. So, just be mindful of that. Please do not leave your key fobs in your car.
One with intense feverish, or whatever the limit is of the key fob.
Exactly, very true.
Yeah, well, the other thing we always think about is if you left your car open, you forget to lock it. We have our garage thing, and if they can push and open your garage, so that's why I'm always making sure I lock my car.
Alright, um, uh, great discussion. Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, the very next item on the agenda is the consent, uh, agenda, and, um, there's several things on it. There's the treasures report, um, the board meeting minutes, uh, February fourteenth meeting, and the special event raffle for the Skars and Moore Car Show, um, benefits the Special Olympics. So, any question, comments, or does somebody want to make a motion?
Uh, no, I have comments.
Yes.
On number six, the minutes. Um, I already sent Michelle a correction, which she's going to make, so I don't know if that's already in the board.
It's the event, but it didn't change the...
Didn't change.
What was the, what was the change?
It was in regard to Apptekisik Road sewer cleaning project.
Mm-hmm.
Weather permitting.
Yes. So, it, it said that, uh, the compressor would be operating on, something about weather permitting on the weekend, but it actually shouldn't say that there's no work on the weekend, and the compressor is during the week.
Thank you for correcting that. Any concerns?
Then, as far as the car show goes, the certificate of insurance we got has expired workers' comp, and by the date of the event, the general liability will be expired also. It's understood that it's too soon to renew the general liability right now. So, just approval will be contingent upon those things being enforced and up to date on the day of the event.
And we have contacted, uh, the business owner who's providing the C O I, to get, to, to remind them that that's required.
Do you want to amend your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Amended, and who seconded it? Seconded by Trusty Micho? Uh, roll call?
Trusty O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trusty Micho.
Aye.
Trusty Vraski.
Aye.
Chris Meyer.
Aye.
Trusty O'Connor.
Aye.
Trusty Canucci.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Um, the, uh, let's see, the next item on the agenda is the, uh, village planners report, but there is no report, right? So, we're skipping it. Um, now we have the village engineers report. Village engineer Perry.
So, the engineers report is in the board packet.
Thank you.
Um, just kinda highlight a few of these things. So, uh, this up is the driving purpose of Hafen Bridge, and fortunately, that cover was struck again, uh, nine days ago. Uh, we're working with Carmichael Construction to get out here to take a look at that. Uh, I do wanna highlight that, uh, Carmichael Construction, I did, uh, have discussions with them about the Ruth Barn. Um, I know that Carmichael Construction, uh, has that to historical things, kind of going back to the discussion of the last... Uh, wanna get them to take a look at the Ruth Barn, uh, about the possibility of, uh, disassembling and reassembling that. So, we, uh, are very interested in that, and hopefully they, uh, give us a, a good budgetary number to continue that part of that conversation.
Did, did you happen to look and Google it, and, and there are four or five businesses that do this?
Yeah, and last week I met with Devote, who moved it, and, uh, got a couple meetings from him as well. He also knows a few up and down...
That they want to come down here and do it.
So, um, we're working and trying to put all of that together so that we get not one budget number, but hopefully a couple to, uh, truth out the value of the work on that.
And, and, and when you finally do put it together, you will weigh the, the cost of moving wires and, and, and all of the difficulty of going down the road, or...
Correct. Yep, that'll be part of the other option, exactly.
Well, no, that would be the...
Uh, no, Carmichael Construction is to take apart and put back together.
Right, right.
Um, and if you take it apart, you know, you...
Then, then you don't have that cost, but if...
I...
But, but if you move it, then, then you've got those costs.
Yes, exactly. Yep. Uh, second, uh...
One more question.
Oh, go ahead.
And, and, and we, we, we also assume, or incorrectly, let me start over. Who pays for the foundation at the new location?
Uh, I, we haven't had that discussion yet.
Okay.
Second item on the engineers' report is the road maintenance program. Uh, just quick updates, we're moving forward on that from discussions of the last board meeting. Uh, Checker Road, the traffic calming, that's the next item on the agenda. Um, over the last week, uh, Lake County DOT has given us some updates on when they're going to bid both the Arlington Heights Road reconstruction project and also the Apptekisik Road widening. Uh, Apptekisik Road, the widening project, uh, that's gonna be bid in April, so in a couple of months here. Uh, with construction starting in June or July, the county is going to, uh, organize neighborhood meetings with those affected. Uh, Greg, unless you've heard otherwise, I, those dates are still T B D. So, we're gonna keep our, our eyes on that so that, uh, ample notification can be given to all infected. Uh, Arlington Heights Road, this is the reconstruction between, uh, Lake Cook Road and eighty-three. That one is a little bit later. That's gonna be, uh, bid in September of this year with construction starting thereafter. I've confirmed that whether they wanna try to start it yet in fall or in the spring. Uh, but there, the county is anticipating both projects will be, uh, in order of eighteen months for construction duration. The, and, uh, actually, uh, Apptekisik Road, the sanitary sewer, I know you mentioned that. Uh, that has been delayed because of the weather. The rain does not help, uh, with that operation. Uh, they are still scheduled to start the work in Long Grove tomorrow, and have that done by March fourteenth. Um, just to reiterate, and as you mentioned on the meeting minutes, there's no work over the weekend, which means the boiler and compressor to dry the liner will not be running over the weekends.
There's another storm coming Thursday night and Friday.
What machinery is up there right now on the side of the road? What are they doing? It looks like there's some pipes and some machines. Is that the machinery that they're talking about?
Yeah, they've got some machinery over there, you know, to get the liner in there.
But that's what, that's the stuff they're gonna be using?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Those machines?
Machines, cars, folks.
Isn't there some kinda like, uh, yeah, I don't know.
Compressor.
Presser, right, yeah. Whatever the thing is, I don't know.
Pressers, there you go. There we go. Um, oh, and then the rest on the engineers' report is kinda some permit updates. Um, but if there's any other question, happy to...
If I, if I could interject, the, uh, I was kinda, uh, contacted by Lake County Division of Transportation today, who's, uh, advised me that, uh, there had been some delays. They were going to begin tree removal along Apptekisik as part of the project for the widening. Um, something about protecting a ba- a bat population, or...
Yes.
Yeah, so, uh, they were looking to get that underway. It's been delayed. They were hoping to start it, uh, this week, but it's gonna be about mid-March before it begins.
Coming close to the deadline for doing it at all. Yeah, that's a new law.
Yeah, the long-eared bat recently...
Exactly.
Endangered species, so there's a very finite window for tree removal to happen, and only wants to get that done before, I think, four...
Fourteen?
Um, or else you have to wait until December first, or November first to happen.
What kind of bat?
Northern long-eared.
Very proud of Lake County.
Yeah, cool.
Um, Greg, just one, one small question. Item sixty-five, are you going to remove that from your list? I'm worried about the signs on your list that keeps growing and never, never gets deleted. It's the school.
Sixty-five.
It's the school, Wooddon School.
Oh, yeah, that was just...
Okay, you're gonna take that off of there?
Done, it's...
You're gonna remove it?
It'll be gone next time.
You're gonna remove it?
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else? Any other questions? If not, then we're gonna move along to the traffic calming item on the agenda, number ten. Um, and you're gonna do the presentation, right? Do you need, do you need me, I just pulled down your document. Do you need me to bring that up, or how do you, how are you gonna do?
Do you wanna bring up that, that first, uh, page that's got the, the gra- map graphic? That would be great.
This, what, this?
A little on that, just a little bit.
Yeah, and then I'll, I'll share it. So, let me, uh, see if I can make that work. Of course, I can't blow it up. Ah, shoot. Can you download it? Sorry, when I can blow it up. Of course, the way it is, it won't go. Let me go into presentation mode. I don't think I can move this. Alright, well, hopefully, can you see it enough?
That's okay.
Yeah, alright, let me share my screen, too. Yeah, let me share my screen. Yep, no, I need to do that, too. Before we get, uh, beginning, and while I'm futzing around trying to share my screen, I wanna welcome Megan Jaeger here from, uh, State Representative Said's office. I see you on the line there. Thanks for being here tonight. We appreciate it. We're honored to, to have all these, uh, officials representing us tonight. This is great.
Yeah, thanks so much for having me.
And you just gave me enough time to hopefully share my desktop, so thank you. You know, hopefully, can you see this, uh, diagram online? Uh, um, can you see it? I can maybe move it around a little bit.
Looks good.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, so, the beta testing of the Checker Road traffic calming. So, this is the, uh, the initial, uh, discussion and review of some of the data that we obtained here. Uh, just kind of over, uh, overview of this. This was approved last fall, and this was a, a four-month study of different traffic calming devices on Checker Road between Schaefer and Arlington Heights Road. Um, so, what you're looking at here, I just wanna kinda point out just a couple things. Uh, there's two, uh, pins on here. You've got Checker One and Checker Two. Uh, these are, those were the two locations where, uh, vehicles were actually counted. Uh, the vehicle traffic calming, or counting, excuse me, was done by what's called High Stars. Uh, plate counters, these are actually metal plates that were taped to the ground, so if you drive through there, you'll see the remnant tape of the various times that those were, uh, on the pavement. Um, uh, the beta testing, uh, included th- three different, uh, traffic calming devices. Uh, the first was the speed sign, uh, kind of halfway in the middle between Arlington Heights and Schaefer Road. Uh, we had one week that it was installed for eastbound traffic. The next week was westbound. Uh, if you recall, this, the speed sign was borrowed from the Village of Killdeer. They've got two of them. They were nice enough to run it once, so, uh, we did one, one week, one in the direction, one week the other direction. Um, and there was the traffic, uh, temporary choker that was, uh, in the location right by Checker One. There's a pin on that map, uh, as well for that. And then the final traffic calming device that was tested was a speed table, and there was actually two of those installed. Uh, there was one just about seven hundred fifty feet east of Schaefer, and then there was one about thirteen hundred feet east of, of Schaefer. So, the study started in August. We got, uh, baseline data. The speed sign was in, uh, installed and data from September, the choker in October, and the speed table, uh, was from November. Uh, I do wanna mention, and I do believe it's important, that Buffalo Grove has studied, is beginning their study of Lake Cook Road, and they actually, um, counted, uh, and did a study for how many people were actually using Schaefer and Checker as a cut-through. They were, they, uh, got that data from license plate, so, you know, they, they looked at that at both ends of the cut-through, so they're able to actually, you know, without a doubt, say, you know, this car enters the corridor and exits the corridor. Um, so, the, the data that we got was speed and volume only, so one may draw some conclusions on whether vehicles are cutting through the corridor or not, but the data from Buffalo Grove would confirm that. Uh, Buffalo Grove, they initially said that they were going to provide that data in January or February. Uh, last we heard that they're going to s- provide that data in the spring, so we're gonna keep on that. So, just kinda some of the, running through some of the data.
Keep that up, or can I take it down?
Um, you, you can keep it up. I think it's as good of, as good of a reference as anything. So, just kinda some of the data, just kinda highlighting what's in, in these different charts here. So, we got baseline data first, and, uh, on the chart on page two, we see the average speed is at or slightly above, within a couple miles an hour, that is, of the posted speed limit of thirty. Uh, but forty-six percent of the cars were going thirty-five miles an hour or above.
Okay.
Uh, we'll go into the electronic speed sign. That was the, the first device, uh, tested. So, speeds rose significantly at, uh, the Checker One traffic calming location. That's the one near, near, or Schaefer Road. Um, and then, right after the sign was removed, cars went faster as well. So, that's the same anecdotal information that we get from the Village of Killdeer and their police department. I know Chief just left, but that's why they have two electronic speed signs. They move them all over the village. They're effective while they're in place. Um, you know, most cars, right after it, uh, flashes at them, then will slow down. We've actually, that was part of the data that we got from the speed sign, that fifty percent of the cars actually do hit the brakes after they see the, see the flashing light.
They're probably afraid of the speed camera.
I agree, I agree. Um, so, and then we also see that the, uh, speed sign was more effective for westbound traffic, for what that's worth, but, you know, that's, uh, the area that's a little less dense and doesn't have as many of the residential subdivisions as we, uh, had talked about in previous meetings. The traffic choker itself, um, you know, that was, that was effective with, uh, controlling vehicle speeds. Uh, did not have a lasting impact on the, the volume, once it was removed, but...
What page is that on, Jeff? Am I there?
I'm not numbered.
Page four of thirteen.
Yeah, page four, correct. No, no, no.
Yellow, not orange.
Yeah, this one. Yeah, page five, thank you. That's what I thought, so.
Okay. So, and then on page five, these charts showed that after the choker was removed, we had, uh, vehicles, uh, speeding, speeding or increasing speed tremendously, uh, at the, those locations, just east of Schaefer. Um, also saw, so that kinda tells me that, you know, the drivers noticed the choker. We've also got, uh, resident feedback that, uh, there was an annoyance factor with the choker. Uh, so, in my mind, it was effective, uh, based on that. Um, there was a little bit of confusion.
Jeff, I look for, um, information as to time of day. Is this twenty-four-seven, uh, timing, or, or, or is this time of day?
So, uh, the traffic counts were seventy-two hour counts, uh, between Tuesday and Thursday, and we took the, the average data.
So, we don't know if it's between four and six, or two and five of the, of the day?
Right, it's a total over three days.
So, the reason is the total. We've got a lot of data, and, you know, I think part of the discussion where I was gonna go with this is if there's other data that we can pull out of there that's meaningful to help make decisions, we can certainly do that.
Okay, thanks.
Well, and, and I do remember, um, going back, now it's like two years ago, I think, when Vernon Township did the study. They had the hours, and it was, we did find that, um, it was like in the morning, um, it was coming off of Lake Cook Road, going north, and then east, right? And then the afternoon, it was the exact opposite. It was coming off Arlington Heights Road, um, going down Checker, making a left on the Schaefer.
But are those the travelers who are speeding?
Well, that's what we don't know, right? But that's what, that's, that's...
That's, that's why I'm asking.
But there was the times of day where the, yeah, it was morning and, and afternoon had switched, so, yeah.
So, um, and to that point, um, there's more traffic that goes eastbound on a daily basis on Checker than there is westbound. Eastbound, you've got about three thousand cars a day. Westbound is about two thousand. And the, the peak, uh, eastbound Checker is from seven o'clock to eight o'clock in the morning. The peak for westbound is from four o'clock to five o'clock. Which, as, as a motorist, that, that makes some sense to me, because if you're trying to get that route, you know, you take the left on the Schaefer, avoid the light, and the afternoon doesn't matter nearly as much because it's a right turn.
Well, and, and the light isn't annoying at one o'clock in the afternoon.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can, we can pull that, and to your point, you know, are, during those peak hours, what is, what are the speeders?
Well, it also would lead me to suggest when enforcement is more important than other times.
So, you're saying we do have timestamps on the speeds?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the speed, we've got that broken into fifteen-minute increments. The speed, uh, is in bin... The speed is in bins of five miles an hour. That's industry standard that you get zero to nine, ten to fourteen. That's why they're broken up like that on the, on the charts. Okay, so that was the, the choker. The speed table, we've got some feedback on the speed table that suggests it was also effective. And people didn't, uh, you know, there was at least a few people that didn't want to slow down for it. But that's kind of the point of it. So we saw the same thing, that there was more people speeding east of the speed table. So after they were through it, then they hit the gas pedal a little harder to do that. So a little bit of driver annoyance on that as well. So just kind of, kind of take a, what is more interesting, charts I want to go through is on page eleven here. So we got average speed of, of vehicles. So the average speed is thirty-five to thirty-six miles an hour, and that was the whole four months during the beta test. The eighty-fifth percentile speed, I, I mentioned that term at one of the prior board meetings. That's, uh, that speed is forty to forty-two miles an hour. So you get the average speed, you get half going above, half going below. The eighty-fifth percentile, you've got eighty-five percent of vehicles traveling below that speed. So you still got fifteen percent going above that. And then right below that, you've got vehicle volume. So this is the, the aggregate both ways. So you get on a daily average, fifty-five hundred cars, that is the baseline data that we collected in August. And then after the speed table was removed, you get five thousand cars, so, or vehicles. So that's a reduction of about eight percent.
Jeff, your legend in this chart's a little deceiving. It doesn't really say that's daily average anywhere, does it? So when I looked at it, I'm like, hey, that's five thousand cars a month. Didn't seem like an issue. I thought that was nothing compared to what we're doing before.
Correct.
Thank you. So that's daily average.
Daily average, yep.
Daily average based on a Tuesday to Thursday measurement.
Yep. So just kind of, kind of summarizing of.
Johnny, you have a comment?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Two hundred cars less in November, if I'm reading this correctly, post, post-peak. Any, there's a holiday, Thanksgiving holiday in there. Does that have any bones on that number?
So right after the, the choker, that was early November, right after the speed table, that was right after the Thanksgiving holiday. So there's probably a lot of things that are impacting these numbers.
I mean, it's only two hundred cars, but.
Yeah, it's, it's only two hundred cars, but still, you know, gas prices, holidays, um, whether it's raining, whether it's a sunny day. Could be a lot of different things, but based on what we have, that's where we're at.
Yeah, it was a five-day holiday though.
Well, that one, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have John Altenberg here from the Vernon Township. John, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I, the question I have is, is it almost has nothing to, I don't think it has nothing to do with speed. You know, we have a portion of Schaefer Road, obviously. And the study that we did, it almost is you have to reduce the amount of traffic, right? Because they're going to come through your choker, they're going to turn south on Schaefer, and then they're just going to hit the gas, I would think. I mean, it's, it's going to endanger. So are you looking at speed or are you looking at reducing the traffic? As you know, we had discussed in our portion of the road, adding a choker to at one time, running around the park.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's at least two, two components and two things to look at and try to marry and work with together. Without the data from Buffalo Grove, it's kind of hard to, you know, confirm how many vehicles are using this as a cut through. And, you know, it's down eight percent, but, you know, it's kind of tough to know exactly what that means without the data from Buffalo Grove.
It's actually, it's, I, I don't think the goal really is, is neither speed nor volume. It's stupid driving that endangers people.
True, true, but stupid drivers are probably the ones that are, are doing the cut, the cut through.
They're skirting around school buses, they're flying through there, you know, when kids are getting off school buses and things like that.
Well, I will offer that if you want to reach out to us, once you get the Buffalo Grove study, and we have a portion of that road. So talk to our highway department, as we talked about earlier, and see what options there are, which, what works better. And if we can apply that in the Schaefer part. I mean, you know, our concern always has been, and I think the choker's a little better than, you know, certainly rumble strips, or whatever they're called, speed bumps, because it causes problems, but there's no repercussions and damage to them. To me, it's even, if you put one border up and you're not doing anything on Schaefer, it's not having any real benefit.
The, the traffic calming, you know, there's no easy answer. There's no silver bullet to this. If there, there was, it probably would have been done by now. But, you know, we're, we're waiting on the, the data from Buffalo Grove to help round out the, the recommendations and confirm, you know, the volumes. But at, at this point, what we do know is the average speed on Checker Road is five miles an hour above it. But more importantly, eighty-five percent of the cars, or eighty-five percentile of the cars are going about ten miles an hour over. So speeding is, is an issue there. So, you know, to address speeding, and, you know, I don't know if you want to get to the.
How does that compare to any, any other road in the village, though?
Point?
So, I mean, I, I go out and tell you how fast people are going on Diamond Lake Road all day long, and they're not following the forty. I, I think it's an interesting data point, is how it compares to just any reference in the village.
Open road is a drag strip.
Yeah, so is, so is Cubeville.
Omar, yeah.
What I wanted to say to your point is, that area, the bigger concern is because it's connected to all these cars. Buffalo Creek, there's people going on those walking and biking paths compared to other roads. And there's a much higher volume of people walking around that area. And I think that's what I keep hearing from constituents. That's what they're concerned about. That there's so many more people going in that area and they're crossing the road, keep going. And, you know, very worried that something bad is going to happen.
That's interesting, because I think most of what we have heard is really like the social.
Oh, but I keep hearing about Buffalo Creek and, you know, and we have seen a humongous increase in people utilizing that. And, um, you know, I don't think people ever thought this many people were going to be coming there. And, and it's exceeded many of our expectations. And I do think we seriously need to look at that, you know, where they're crossing from one, or the cross to the other. I think, you know, that, that worries me all the time.
I, I, I don't understand why they're coming out of.
It's a crosswalk.
There's, there's a crosswalk, but why?
So if you want a four mile, if you want a four-mile walk, you have to go there.
The walking.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm thinking of a different, okay, no, I'm, I'm on a different road, okay.
The other question is, is there a way, are there brands out there to get to?
Our biggest problem is.
Not knowing how to, what, what we should do. That's, yeah.
Consensus, because this, this board has seen the other half of the population from Country Club Meadows come in and say, hey, don't block us off, because we've got to get to our houses. And that's our way in and out of our subdivision, right? So it's not, there's never been a clear consensus in the thirty years since this stuff.
Well, I think a big part of the Buffalo Grove, Long Grove question is, you have sidewalks that invites strolling and walking and children. We don't, it's private property up to the edge of the road here. You know, where, where, where's a pedestrian, a child, a bike, or where they going to go?
So Jeff, you're going to take charge, though?
Yes, yes. So good discussion.
Thank you.
But, yeah, Chris, to your point, you know, these collector roads that are long, straight, vehicle speeds are certainly higher. I can say that anecdotally for the other roads, as a driver, I know what people are doing in front and behind and what the speedometer's doing. And we saw it here on Checker. So what I was going to say is, you know, enforcement is, you know, one way to deal with that. Kildir's got the, you know, reputation, you know, Long Grove Road, they police that. By where I live, Haynesville has a reputation of policing one-twenty. You know, and the people just know not to speed on those roads in the, in those sections. As far as implementing permanent traffic calming devices, whether they be the choker or a speed table, and Johnny, you were going directly where I was going to go, that, you know, we tested them in a specific location, just pretty much just east of Schaefer Road. But we saw that they slow down there, but conversely, they're, they're gunning it and speeding, you know, east of, of Checker Road. And I have no doubt that it, it works the other way as well for, you know, people, you know, go either continuing west on Checker or, you know, making the turn and going down to Schaefer. So, you know, that was the other part that's, that's written in here, that if you, if the village wants to pursue the permanent devices, you know, I would, I'm just going to suggest, you know, three or four of these, you know, to control the whole corridor, not just one specific location, because, you know, you're kind of, it's the balloon, you know. You're squeezing it in one location, but it's, you know, expanding at the others, so. So with that, that, that's the data that we have. Like I said, I think this is kind of the first, kind of read through it. And we already did some great feedback of, you know, parsing it down just a little bit more. And then making it probably just a little bit more meaningful for decisions. But, uh, we're there for, and, uh, go with the discussion from there.
Am I reading a recommendation that it's really not to prevent anything other than changing the speed limit and enforcement versus the next?
So that's what the, they said, but like, like, you know, and I wanted to just kind of circle back on that.
Once we get to the volume death in Buffalo Grove, that's going to impact that.
Okay, so right now it's still waiting for me.
So I have a question about the speed limit. People are averaging about five miles over the speed limit. It's thirty, they're doing about thirty-five. Your experience, if we should drop it to twenty-five, would they then do thirty, if they continue to do thirty-five? Because that just feels right down the road. I mean, if you predict the future.
Yeah, yeah, no, my personal goal is not this. I would expect them to still drive five miles an hour over. And they would probably drive as fast as what they can get away with.
I think you're fighting human nature. It doesn't matter where they're speeding. And I shouldn't say they. I should say we. We speed. And if, and if you say you don't, nah.
I will say, you know, knowing how, how carefully that part of Long Grove Road is enforced by Kildir, I'm much more concerned and watchful when I drive that bit.
Oh, Long Grove Road, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. But I make it up somewhere else.
So over time, they built up a brand. They built up an expectation by enforcing over time.
I agree with you.
It's still been passed by people going sixty. I mean, there's.
Always going to be somebody, no matter what you put in.
There's chokers there, there's lift signs, and there's still people driving sixty.
You're going to get a bell curve, but maybe you can shift it a little or skinny it up.
And, and there's danger everywhere. I, I spoke to the sheriff tonight and coming in here tonight, it's funny because Chris saw him too. I almost hit somebody on Old McHenry. He was on his bike. He did not have anything but blast. Nothing.
No reflector down.
Nothing.
There was nothing, yeah.
I was walking into town and from Robert Cupp's office, and I walked against traffic. And I made eye contact with the people. And there's one segment where the bushes are pretty tight, on their phone, and they're maybe, and I, you know, you can't.
Well, I, I suggested to the sheriff that somebody needs to create a reflective patch that can be given away for people to slap on their back when they're out on a bike. No, no, something on their back, so that a car can see them.
I got it. Change the speed limit to five mile an hour across the world, you will save one point two million people every year, guaranteed.
Or make them walk.
Guaranteed.
I, I have another follow-up question. Did I understand at the beginning that when those speed signs are put up, people tend to slow down?
Once it flashes the first time, they hit their brakes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I wonder if it would make sense to combine a lower speed limit with those flashing signs?
That's what I'm reading.
Yeah, so they're, they are effective. They're not intended to be a permanent thing, like Kildir does, you know, they move them around. And, you know, whether people think that they're actually going to write tickets on them or not, we'll just leave that for a discussion for another day. But, you know, they move them around because they are effective while they're there. But it's kind of, kind of like other signs, you know, if they're there all the time, they have the potential to become, you know, white noise, too.
Right.
Yeah, you got to make it novel, so.
Fade into the background.
So we have a lot of people, we have a lot of areas along those that are, that are people moving around.
Right.
You know, there's, there's some, really.
Jeff, could you give me the definition of prevailing speed?
Prevailing speed?
There used to be a, a definition, and I don't remember what it was. That you give X number of people on X road, and they will drive at the safest, they will speed, but they will drive at a safe speed. And if you lower the speed limit, they will drive faster.
So.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and another way that, you know, we, we look at it from the design perspective is, you know, whatever the posted speed is, we make sure that it's safe for, you know, five miles an hour over. You know, because we, you know, full speed.
But that's by lowering it, you do not in fact lower the overall speed. It's kind, I, I kind of thought of, it's, it's the, the logic that we live with in real estate. If you do a, a, a real lowball, you're going to end up paying more.
That's why I was saying, over the speed limit in combination with the flashing signs. Lowering the speed limit alone, unless you have enforcement, uh.
Former trustee Jaeger had a comment, yeah.
When I was trustee, and we have a predecessor to Gaywell Hamilton, I asked that same question to Joe, civil engineer. I said, what is a good speed limit? And he said, not to drop it, but what is reasonable, reasonable speed. Now, you said something real interesting before, a passive sign, and a passive sign, and you ignore it over time. But what we're talking about is an active sign. As you see, as you go northbound on Route Fifty-three, and as you get off onto eastbound Lake Cook Road, that sign is established there, and it flashes every time I come up to it. And then I slow down because of the curb. So my thought is, that sign, being an active sign, flashes, reminds you every time. It may have an effect, it would be worth a long-term study.
Um, one thing I, I wanted to mention, and I think I've said it before, but, and this kind of goes back into one of the comments earlier. The speed signs that the Village of Kildir got, and I can look into it a little bit more, but they actually got a grant to get those, so. Uh, there are grants out there for this type of thing.
So, so that we could move them around?
Yeah, they, they got the grants for that.
Yeah, we talked about this some time ago.
Yeah, Kildir's got one officer that that's his, his job to put them up there on a Monday morning and then, um, or he puts them up on Wednesday, and Monday morning, he takes them down so that he can charge the batteries off on Tuesday. Probably more detail than you wanted to know.
If you want, if you buy them, how much are they?
Uh, the two signs, uh, we actually had the. Ten grand.
Yeah, they're expensive.
And then?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand. And is there?
No, for, for the two of them.
And then is there an ongoing subscription cost for the data?
Uh, that was included in that ten thousand.
Right, so I mean, you'll, you'll spend ten thousand the first year, that includes the same. But in the follow-on years, how much do you pay just for the data?
Uh, yeah, it's the, the cloud data, data package here. You, uh, communications prep, zero, so that, that, uh, doesn't help.
Nothing's on there.
It's, nothing is, nothing, nothing is free or most of free, so.
That would be good to know.
Yep.
So I, I kind of trying to figure out where we go from here.
So I, I kinda trying to figure out where we go from here, right? So you're saying, Jeff, that you're still looking for a little more data?
Yep.
Um, I heard, uh, John Altenberg, the chair of the township board, um, offering maybe to work in collaboration with us too, to maybe do something on their property in Schaefer. Um, that'd be an interesting, you know, option too, right? Um, I know we had talked about, uh, at that crosswalk, uh, I got, I joined some of your meetings, right, about putting, uh, some flashing signs when people go through, but the board shot it down, right?
Yeah, we shot it down, but I can go back to this data, I think, and we have Buffalo Grove data, and I think we might have some more to work with. And also, state funding, I think we should be going to Representative Lee and, uh, Diddich, and get them as part of the discussion, because as you said, there's grants available. Plenty of grants up for, for, um, right now for infrastructure, so there should be something on there. But if you could send a report to me, that would be great. This one? Yeah, and, and maybe possibly, if, if, uh, uh, the board president would be willing to borrow, let us borrow you for a meeting to testify, uh, if you want to raise a budget.
You can go in here, you're fine.
Yeah, I also add that, you know, what Ann brought up is so true about Long Grove Road, and I feel like if you did, you know, some kinda campaign for that area and, and convince people that, you know, it is gonna be more tightly watched, and there's gonna be more penalties or something, you know, I, people will believe it. I know every single person I know in this whole area is afraid of Long Grove Road, and they go slow. They know that, you know, they, they know that it's, I don't even see a lot of cops, they're all coming. I take that a lot, but people, but people.
Yeah, and that's maybe one day a week, maybe.
But people, because they've heard, whatever it is they've heard, I know people do go slow on their road. I never seen anybody going quick. And, um, yeah, not much though, not much. Whenever I'm on, I really never seen anybody.
I'm a baseball fan.
I see them going fifty.
Have you?
I live off, I live off the Long Grove Road speed all the time.
Wow, I've never seen it.
I haven't seen a squad car there in months.
But you're at the mercy of the sheriff's department, so.
But, but, but I travel Long Grove Road from.
Talking to Kildare, you're talking.
From Eila all the way to Old Fifty-three. It's a raceway.
So I'm just asking the board, where do we go from here, right? Cause.
I think we have to wait for the, for Buffalo Grove.
Okay.
I, I think we need that data.
So what's taking them so long? Why do they need till the spring to give us what they already have?
Gee, I wonder.
We're, we're trying, we're trying to figure that out too.
But, uh, yeah, I think that, uh, we can further that conversation and, uh, use, uh, some more influence to help them produce that sooner than later.
Well, we've.
Since we're, we're waiting for it.
Yeah, we've got somebody from Representative Said's office here, second Jaeger, she can maybe help us too, right?
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, Dan. Yeah, thank you, by the way. Yeah, and then we'll work with, uh, it's, it's Dane Bragg, right? Okay, got it, from Buffalo Grove. But are we, I mean, are we a stopping point here? I, I know, Allison, you're here, Mark, do you have anything you wanna say tonight? That'll give you an opportunity here?
Yeah, I, I, just a couple of comments on this. First, I appreciate so much all the time and effort that's been put towards this to try to find a solution for the area. Um, secondly, I read through the report, and one of the suggestions at this time was to lower the speed limit to thirty miles an hour, which it already is. So I just wanted to make that clear, that that's not gonna help us. And Schaefer.
There was a typed memo.
Yeah, there was a typo.
Yep.
Uh, Schaefer Road's five, and they're still going, you know, sixty, according to the last study from two years ago. So I don't know that reducing the speed is going to be, um, super helpful. Um, but, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna try to take what we can get. The other thing I noticed is that, you know, I, I'm hearing the board talk about, and Jeff, you know, a, a two-hundred car reduction, but when I'm seeing the study, from the time the study began to the time the study ended, I'm seeing a five-hundred car reduction. And what that says to me is driver fatigue. You know, first they came through and they got the signs, then they came through and they got the pinch, and then by the time they got the, to the speed humps, they're done. You know, there was, there's, there's just fatigue from these people are going, okay, now what, what's gonna be here? So they stopped using the route. So I saw a reduction in five hundred roughly cars than the two hundred, and I just wanted to point that out as well. I, I wasn't sure why, uh, the number two hundred cars was, where that was coming from, unless it was just from the time of the last study to the next. So I just wanted to point that out, just, um, something different set of eyes noticed. So, but again, I appreciate everybody, um, putting some effort towards this. It is, uh, like Mara said, the area is getting used heavily. Um, it's, it's always been a, a heavy cycle area, but now even more so, and a lot of foot traffic and, and so forth. So those risks are definitely higher than they have been in the past with the forest preserve opening. Um, the cut-through traffic has been an issue for years and years. Um, so now we've kinda got a coupled problem with the, the cut-through traffic and the speeding, and then the increased pedestrian traffic as well. So it, it, it warrants, you know, um, you know, a more urgent need at this point than it has in the past. So, um, I just wanna thank everybody for working on that.
Thank you for your comments. If there's nothing else, we're gonna, I think we should stop right here. We'll wait for the additional information, and then some conversations are gonna happen with Vernon Township too, right? So, okay. Thank you everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Allison. All right, moving on to the next item, which is, uh, consideration, discussion consideration approval of a resolution approving a reappointment proposal from Sikic, LLP, for our auditing services. Uh, there was one piece of data that wasn't in here, but I wanted to know what, what we were going up from. Um, so I pulled down the, uh, prior proposal, and I noticed that, um, every year, they've been increasing it by five percent. So in twenty-twenty-two, it was twenty-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-one dollars. Proposal for twenty-twenty-three would be twenty-eight thousand, six hundred seven. And then, you know, the next year, thirty thousand, one hundred twenty-one, and then thirty-one thousand, six twenty-seven. Every year it's a approximate five percent increase, including the TIF audit report and the single audit report, if applicable. They've increased those rates five percent every year. So I don't, I mean, it seems like that's fair with the inflation and everything, but I would look for trustee Kritzmeyer's input here too.
I back up one. One, one, just Sikic got here two years ago, we determined that we wanted to, I think it was three, we determined that we wanted to redo this, not because the prior Baker Tilly had done anything wrong, but just to get another set of eyes. And that was the prior village manager, the accountant, um, uh, Debbie Smith and Greg Seidler, involved in, we put together what our criteria was. We had eight or, eight or nine different firms, and we came down and we were very comfortable with the incumbents, Baker Tilly and with Sikic. And I would say, weigh in here, Greg, but I think we're still very happy with what Sikic has done. They're more Illinois-based. We have been working with Baker Tilly out of Wisconsin, and so some things changed, but it's all been very good on all of that. I'll put, to your point, President, uh, still, they, you know, I sit on a board also for mutual funds, for mutual fund stuff, and I will tell you, the auditing staff went up ninety percent this year, um, for, just to be able to attract good quality, you know, good quality staff, as well as continue to invest in forms of technology that help them, you know, kinda get the rope stuff and the new staff, the real staff from more of the higher level kinds of things. So I'm comfortable with this, right?
Okay, any discussion on it? Anyone object to, I'll just ask, uh, to extending the agreement or entering into a new agreement?
Greg, is there anything you would say about working with them?
They were, uh, they were excellent to work with. Uh, little hand-holding where it needed to be when I first came on board. Uh, Seidler had hoped that the board would look at them favorably for an extension on the contract as well.
That's our count.
Is there, is there any percentage to using a, um, benchmark for increases or decreases? Have a, in other words, they're assuming, it assumes that the value for, and the price increases, that's only five percent a year. So if there's a recession, is there any, any benchmark, like with an adjustable rate loan, you know, there's a, it's tagged, you know, three, five-year treasuries or whatever?
I don't know, I don't, I can't answer that question, but you, maybe you can. But I do remember we did do an RFP.
We did an RFP.
So, so we kinda, this was in line with a lot of their folks, if I recall correctly. I don't know if you, I don't remember that, what I mean.
I can find the RFP. We, we did an RFP, um, and so we got eight or nine different responses. And then the, mostly the three of us, Debbie, Dave, and I, just went through and like, what are the questions we're going to ask, and how are we gonna evaluate? I put that in a memo. I can branch that up. That was part of our records from the time we made the recommendations, but that memo was in there.
And that might address your question, but I mean, I.
Yeah, I just wonder if it's, it's, if it's.
That is not anything I've ever seen counted, Joe. I will, nobody goes backwards in, in salary.
Well, but, you know, admittedly, if the economy changes, I just, I mean.
They, they hope studies, they don't pay their people less, and that's really, we're buying people.
Okay.
Well, are we, I mean, are we at a point where people would feel comfortable making a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, okay, got it, all right. So moved by trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by, uh, by trustee Tanucci. It's a roll call.
Trustee Kritzmeyer, trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee Baroski.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Thank you. Well, the next item on the agenda is discussion consideration approval of a resolution for a grant program for invasive species remediation. So, um, who is going to be the lucky one to present that?
Yeah, trustee Micho, and then you got Natalie's own, Natalie's own book.
So why would you like me to do this, or what would you like me to do?
Well, I think we presented it a couple of weeks ago. Um, I just made a few changes to, um, just kind of, um, can't brought up something, he turns about some of the wording, and they made it very clear, it's only for, uh, invasive plant species, um, nothing to do with plants or animals. Um, and, I mean, so that's my question.
Go ahead.
No, my, my, I'm just, um, concerned about the same homeowner coming in for multi-projects. I wonder if we have a limitation based on PIN number. That's a, then, five years we don't see again. Because otherwise, somebody with a lot of enthusiasm could keep lobbying those for some money.
Yeah, I think that's.
Which isn't a bad thing, but I think you need all the one, two, or five homeowners to run.
No, I agree. I think that would probably be part of the consideration project. Have you ever applied to this program?
Should we just set a bogey out that, you know, if you got the award, don't come back for two years or something like that? And then from a staff perspective, um, I think about down the road, what we can do. And I think, I mean, you gotta burn property, otherwise you're never gonna get, get ahead, right? Even if you tear all your buckthorn out unless you're burning. Our challenge has been, you know, a lot of things. It's been, uh, you know, we're not able to burn that day because the kids have got soccer. So I'm wondering if the staff can work on setting up a website, a way that residents can sign up for group burns. Like if, you know, seven or eight residents wanna get together and put their name on the list, we'll go around and hit everybody's property that day with competent, somewhat-trained adults kinda doing it together. Cause, you know, I get worried about me burning my three acres. I, you know, kinda by myself, or with, or you're with the kids, you know. So I thought if we could facilitate some way for people to come around and get together and do a group burn one by one on a certain day or whatever, maybe, maybe we can do something like that to make it easier.
Should we?
Facilitate, yes.
Yeah, the school bar.
Yeah, right, something like that, right?
Should we do it via HOAs?
My HOA May meeting was just held in January.
I would not, because like I live nearby, but I haven't gone one.
Right, well.
Right, exactly right, exactly right.
We have a new, we don't have a newsletter yet, but we do have a way to, to email the residents, right?
Well, that's kind of it, right? But if we could do it electronically or web-based or promote it, and say, hey, look, we're gonna.
Definitely is. But I mean, uh, I don't know if you approved it, the website, Maka, but Natalie sent out. Um, I mean, I think there would absolutely be, are you interested in, you know, being on a volunteer burn, burn crew, you know?
They're, by the way, we're gonna burn your place too.
Well, that's happened, so don't, don't go there.
Not sure.
Is there a liability to that?
Yeah. I don't know. Vic's laughing now. Is there a liability there?
Do, do, do.
Vic, you're muted, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
Vic, there was a question, is there a liability to us? You're muted.
Yeah, uh, there could be, depending on how we orchestrate it. I mean, I think that the Forest Preserve District, or maybe some of the other preservation organizations in Lake County, uh, open land, something like that, may already have training and facilitation of projects. I think before the village dives into that, we might want to look to see who might already be doing it. And if, uh, you know, it's sort of like all those who wanna volunteer step forward and we step back. Um, so that the, the work can be done, but it would not necessarily be done under the aegis of the village. We can provide, uh, data, but I, I think that if we can avoid hands-on with that, especially if we don't necessarily have all of the horses and, uh, expertise to do it, um, we will be better served from a liability perspective.
Even if we just provided a venue for people to communicate together?
If, if you recall, I, I set one of these meetings up before the, the new fire chief. And, and we had a very successful meeting. And, and ironically, it began as a meeting to the, for the neighbors to learn how to do a burn, and yet, burn companies came and, and they signed up with the burn company. So it, it was successful in that, in that way. But I've always felt that people should know how to burn, even if they don't do it.
So, so getting back to, um, this grant, right? So, um, it was this idea that they were putting aside, what, fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Fifty thousand dollars, that residents could apply for minimum of five hundred up to two thousand, and it would have to be matching, right? Um, and, uh, this would be a pilot program, right, that we would start. There's a whole, uh, application that'd have to be filled out. And, um, you know, the idea was to, uh, take back our conservancies, right? Get rid of the buckthorn, um, you know, get rid of the, uh, purple loose strife and exotic tezel and all the other stuff, fragmites, right? So that it looks like, um, Long Grove that we may remember. Um, so I don't know, I mean, I, you know, is this the, the, the kinda structure that somebody would like to move forward with, and then, you know, what would we, I mean, it, it sounds like the resolution's written in a way, if you like this, we could go forward, and then there's some, give the village manager some powers to work within the confines of what this is, so that it can be administered and we see how it goes. So I, I'll stop there and see.
When you say pilot program, what do you mean?
I mean, we would do this for this year. We put it in the budget and.
For one year?
For one year, yeah.
Okay, because I, I, I was concerned about a sunset on it.
No, I, I just meant, yeah.
And, and so that, that describes it. But, but then I also thought about all of the people here, all of the commissions, and we're all excluded.
I, I didn't like.
That, it doesn't set well.
Yeah.
It just doesn't set well.
There's a clause in here that was.
I can fix that, I quit.
Okay, me too.
I quit.
We're not eligible, we're not, none of us are eligible, cause it would be a conflict of interest. So I think that.
Right.
Well, well.
Right, we're voting on who gets the award, so we could potentially be voting to send money to ourselves.
Well, the, the plan commission isn't.
That's not a good look.
Plan commission isn't.
That's true.
Yeah. So I think that's.
At a minimum, the board should be excluded.
I think also the community.
Right, good point.
Well, I ju- I just think that the people who are doing the work shouldn't be excluded.
Dang, I quit. I got a question coming up there before, and I could be backed by me, I'm good.
Oh, jeez.
It's, it's, it, it just, it just doesn't, doesn't sit well.
Well, and, and so I, so that, so it was, it was a valid point. So how do you change that so that you take the conflict of interest out? You'd have to recuse yourself if you're part of any voting on one of these things, right?
Well, you'd absolutely have to recuse yourself. Vic, am I off on that?
Yeah, Vic, actually, Vic, give us, uh, your legal opinion. There's a section here that says we wouldn't be eligible to apply for grants.
No, no.
Right. Anytime, anytime you're voting on something in which village money is involved, you cannot be a beneficiary of that, uh, of that outcome, because if you do, then you're subject to, um, a felony conviction. So maybe, maybe you prefer. So, maybe, maybe you prefer-
Yeah, we don't want that.
Maybe you prefer the, uh, the horizontal pinstripes, but, but I don't recommend that outcome.
Well, I don't recommend going to jail either, but I mean, um, but, but I mean-
But your yard'll look good.
Is simple recusal from the vote adequate?
No, a- actually, well, it depends on how much it is, there, there are a whole series of statutory exceptions in terms of amounts and purposes. So, you have to align what the actual amount is and the purpose, uh, but as a general rule, there's no safe harbor. You either don't accept the money, or you run the risk of violation.
Can everybody, can every, if we're excluded, can every other commissioner feel that?
Uh, be- because the village board is the final determining, uh, body, it's only going to be the village board members that are affected, the recommending bodies are not.
Let me have to put another-
The members of the recommending body.
So, what if it's not us applying, but our spouse? Does that make a difference?
No, no, that's, that's, that's not, um, that, that is not-
Do you own the house, that your spouse?
That is not a, uh, that is not a silly question, because, uh, it will depend on the specific facts. For example, I, I don't know who said it, somebody said, it depends on whose name the, the title of the house is, and, and that is probably the correct response to that.
Vic, if the HO, if, if a member of the village board lives in an HOA and the HOA applies for it, that should, that should be different, right?
Yeah, that's a different outcome, it's not money going to benefit the board member directly, it's the HOA that is the beneficiary.
Give it to your HOA.
I'm the HOA.
Yeah, somebody on the HOA board can apply, so, all right, well, but it's interesting, cause that, that kinda caught me by surprise too, and I didn't think of, you know, gifting or whatever else, you know, that, uh, we have our hand in the cookie jar and we could get called out for it, cause I didn't really see it that way, you know what I mean, so?
So-
Well, if, if, if it excludes us, that's, that's one thing, but not everybody else.
Yeah.
The person who, the person who wrote this up, uh, used to work in Springfield, so has some firsthand experience of, of making sure that, uh, everything's kosher.
Can we let our business owners who own large pieces of land know about this?
We have to vote it through.
I know, I know, but let us know.
They're in here though, they, they can apply.
Yeah.
How do they know it?
Well, they don't know, yeah.
Some of our favorite, so we have some favorites that we, every year encourage to burn, and they don't burn, and pretty visible, and-
Yeah, the out, the outreach hasn't started yet, other than the amount that this may, that this was gonna be for the board, so, but that, we're gonna have an outreach effort, then anyway.
April fourth.
I'm just gonna say, we're kind of-
What happens that day?
So, it's, it's not a given that we'll be able to set fifty thousand into this year's budget, until we go through all that, including that public hearing and so forth?
Yeah, good point.
Well, it's written the program's intended to disperse up to fifty thousand dollars.
Uh, up to, okay.
Up to.
Is that worrying, or something, saying like?
Yeah. Yeah. All right, so we're, uh, so, um, you just tell me where you wanna go here, is, uh, I'm hearing thumbs up. Thumbs up.
I'm really not for it.
Can't vote because it's your program, you, you gotta recuse yourself, okay.
So, with the keynote removing of the appointed village officials, that wording changed?
Can we do that, we can change, the, the appointed officials can apply, right, we're good with that, Vic?
So, do we wanna make the village, village board and CSC members can't apply?
No, just, just not the village board.
Just not the village board.
Yeah, the village, village board is the final decision maker.
Okay.
So, everyone else can apply, okay, so that changed.
Do we also want-
Do we wanna add a limit for how much?
That's what I was just gonna ask.
Yeah, yeah, plus the, plus the, with the limit of no more than one application every other year.
Is there okay with that?
It means that we're only gonna dispo- we're trying to share the wealth.
Okay.
Once they start, then you let it grow back to next year, you didn't really do good progress, you know what I mean?
We're not talking about burning though, right, we're talking about some serious eradication shit, we're not getting a grant for burning, so, probably.
I don't know.
I mean, it could be, could, I mean, that is a form of controlling invasive.
Yeah.
And it can be very expensive, don't do it yourself.
And there is a limit of two thousand, and it has to be matched by at least people, no?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it's not, it's not Christmas, you know, but it helps, and I'm, I'm-
But that's why I think, I think, I would say, I would support just the suggestion that you don't allow repeat offense, re- repeat offenders. I mean, let's, let's pay better, we, we try to encourage, I mean, we try to encourage broader uptake by limiting it every year.
It spreads throughout the village, not just one.
It does.
Well, we're trying to prevent it from spreading throughout the village, but-
Okay, so let me continue, are you, uh, nodding your head?
Yeah, I just still have a question, so the committee to approve is the, the conservation committee as well, so are they, should they be eligible, not eligible?
Well, they're not the deciding, they just make a recommendation.
Vic said it was okay, right?
They, they are nearly a recommending body.
Committee are eligible, there are two board members on the committee, so those board members are not eligible, but the other committee members are.
Is it one or two?
And they, they won't be eligible, not because of their-
At this stage, are exclusive.
Right, one board member, one board.
One board member, two conservancy, and the rest.
Yeah.
Who actually- Who's the head of the conservancy committee?
We do.
So, every one of those comes back to the board? Are you the head of the conservancy committee? No, okay, so one board member, sorry, sorry. Letter of resignation.
Oh, jeez, don't go there, all right, Chris, what other questions do you have?
I don't, thank you, I think it's a great idea, we need longer due, appreciate it.
Yeah, are we at a point where somebody's willing to make a motion with a couple revisions, right, appointed officials can't apply, and you can only apply every other year? I think those are the two main changes, right?
Yes.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
And I presume when we say every other year, it's if you're successful, if you fail the first time, you can certainly apply the next year.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
An award every other year.
An award every other, okay, got it.
Um, I have a, I have a question, as long as you've graced us with your presence this evening, John, um, is the county doing anything about all of the teasel on the roadways and, besides cutting it, besides cutting it?
She's the county, I have the township.
And or township, you know, as far as like teasel and, and the fragmites and all those horrible invasive things, we seem to cut them at the wrong time.
Yes.
When they do cut them, um, cause it just spreads the seeds.
Um, I can certainly ask our highway department about that, uh, I'm, I'm not aware of what we're doing on that, but I can certainly look into it. They need to cut it in June, when it's bolting, but not yet going to seed.
And when I saw you two days ago, I just had this big meeting with the OT to talk about our area.
Yeah.
And what projects are coming up, and we, um, and we did talk a lot about advocates to grow and how this probably seems like doing now, and, and, um, I will check into that for you.
And like, like when, when you're coming off of fifty-three, that, that entire quarter is loaded with teasel, and it's like a whole lot of stuff.
Every August, after the teasel goes to seed, and it just disperses it everywhere.
Well, that's why the forest preserve is so full, that's just, is that it, it blows there, and, and they, they cut it at the wrong time, and, yeah, nobody's-
And then the seeds stick to the mower, and they bring the mower to the next place, and spread the seeds in the next place.
They're doing a good job.
Is it possible that they really have no knowledge of this, how they contribute to the spread, and that it's an educational thing?
It is possible, it is possible, but I feel like our forest preserve is like pretty, I mean, I, I'll tell you, you know, I mean, buckthorn, we talk about constantly and everywhere, and we don't have the resources that we really need to, you know, to attack it all, and, um, you know, we're talking about that all the time, different ways we can go at these problems.
But if it's more an issue of timing than money, you know, that would at least be a good first step, and, and maybe it is just e- educating the people who run these crews.
Oh, I, no, I mean, that's very possible.
Well, you're good at taking down election signs before like-
Ah.
You know, it's timing, timing is everything.
So, you're gonna look into that, um, so does somebody wanna, thank you, can somebody, uh, does somebody wanna make a motion to approve?
Yeah, a motion, I think three of us made a motion.
Okay, so who was the first one?
Ken did it first, I suck at this.
Okay, so moved by trustee Tanucci, seconded by trustee Micho, roll call, please.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you, thank you, thanks for all the great work.
Nat- Natalie, congrats. Excellent.
Oh, congratulations, Natalie.
Thanks, Natalie.
You can say hi too, if you want, yeah. She's like, no. All right, so, um, the next item on the agenda, I think we've discussed, because it was the, the, yeah, committee, so I think this, you've got direction on the village hall, the cow, right? Uh, so now it's time for trustee reports, I do not have one, the village president trustee reports, I do not have one tonight, what about trustee Barowski?
Nothing, thank you.
What about trustee Kritzmeyer?
No.
What about trustee Micho?
No.
What about trustee O'Connor?
No.
What about, uh, trustee O'Reilly?
No.
What about trustee Tanucci?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Part two of the last report, so, uh, a month ago, we looked at a proposal for the community grant program that was put together by staff. On my impression, that is a, a season of more than reception, so I went back and took parts of past programs from twenty thirteen, twenty eighteen, as well as newly proposed program. Put it together into a program which was really more of a, it really created what I call like an outer fence or an outer guardrail, that would give us flexibility within those guardrails to evaluate program requests as they came in. So, Bobby, uh-
What, which one is that? We have twenty-three A, B, C, and D.
Uh, hold on, well, it's the one I emailed out on February the fourth, but let me go ahead, unfortunately, technical problems with my computer tonight, so I have to do the old-fashioned way on my phone, so let's go to-
I believe the twenty-three A, B, C, D was the, the one we presented, that the, uh-
Well, so Kent, what are you asking tonight, actually, so, I know we're trying to, you're, you wanna move it forward, right?
It's, uh, it's twenty-three A, twenty-three A is the answer. So, we need to do something, all right, what we have now is a moratorium, we also have the freedom to give grants outside of that moratorium, and we've done that twice, for good reasons in both cases. Um, one, because we had already committed, and it was the right thing to do, and the other was continuing teasel grants for the park district, which we've done for years, and to maintain teasel, you gotta do that every year, so, we didn't want, you know, that to be held captive by this process. Um, but we need to define a program and live within that program, so we have two proposals, we have a very detailed proposal that staff put together, that really lays out what you can do, what you can't do, all the procedures, all the processes. What I put together was something that's a lot looser, sets the guardrail, gives us freedom within those guardrails to evaluate each, uh, request as it comes in. So, I'm saying, I can live with either one, it stands now, we have neither, and we have none, so we need to do something. Uh, two, two weeks ago, the request was, go back, read it, send me comments, I got none. Bobby had previously sent me a comment before the past meeting, that she liked what I put together.
I like it, I, my own challenge, um, individuals, uh, not be considered, and I, I, I would like to propose that we allow things like a high school group or something like that, so that individuals can be permitted, you know what I mean?
You, so you wanna specifically say what is allowed, as opposed to saying what is forbidden?
Well, you say not considered individuals, so request not be considered.
So, I took that from-
I'm just saying, whatever it is, I think-
I, I took that from the program that was enforced until we put a moratorium on it, so we can certainly remove that, if you want.
I, I think that's the idea, so we remove that, because theoretically, it could be a person.
If, if we could sharpen that up.
And I used to do the egg hunt, and I used to get five hundred dollars, and I would, I used to run the whole egg hunt in Long Grove.
Yes, individuals, and then, the other one was the deadline, we've never enforced that, to me, do we care? Or should we just ask for sixty days lead time, until the money runs out? Cause I don't really care.
I don't care either.
So, take out the sentence about the deadline?
We just ask for, like, you know, sixty days for us to be able to consider it.
Can you just define programs and events that enhance community vitality?
Hmm.
Like statements, what is that?
It is, it, I think it is essentially-
What does that mean?
What doesn't it mean?
No, I'm asking, but-
Well, I'm asking.
Why is it?
What doesn't this mean? Could you have a beer brawl?
I think it's too nebulous. I mean, it's, this is, there, there certainly are broad parameters in here, that sentence is-
But you have the ability to say no. You don't have to hang it on anything, you can just say no.
I understand, I just am asking, why did I get in there and what, it was meant to be there? How did I get in there?
Which, which part are you looking at?
Programs and events that enhance community vitality, I, 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 I believe it's redundant, because it, below it, it talks about educational, recreational, arts, cultural humanities, humanities needs, you know?
Okay.
Humanities covers it, but I, I just think it's, uh-
So, that came from the twenty thirteen version, again, if we don't, if we like that, we can remove it.
I'm sorry, say it again.
That came from the twenty thirteen version, so, in, in my, so I'll just say real quick, in my February fourth email, I explained what I did, I used the twenty thirteen-
Mm-hmm.
-policy as a baseline, I added some of all of the restrictions from the twenty eighteen policy, I added the reimbursement clause from the one that was just put together by the staff, I also added grant guidelines one and two from the one that was just put together with the staff. And those four things combined give you what I'm proposing, and we can make changes from there.
My only technical question is, we have, what, the one that was passed already, is this gonna replace it totally?
Yeah.
I think that's the same time.
That'll, so we'll, we'll be, um, basically canceling out the other one, and this will be the new program, for everything.
And even if we had accepted the staff's proposal, it would have done the same thing, it would have replaced the previous one.
I thought it bill, I thought it was still, like, it was still, it was a full-
Totally replaced.
Okay, got it.
This, this is the one we have a moratorium on.
Yes, yeah.
The twenty eighteen version is what we have on the moratorium.
Um, I can send it to him, that's okay, the, the release of grants, I'd use some plain English and just say after the fact, like, for, for people reading this. Is reimbursable funding based on receipts from actual program expenditures, like-
Make it really clear, we pay after the fact.
Something in it would, make that really clear.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Clean that way.
Yeah.
A question I have as a result of that comment, we, upon occasion, have received, um, invoices that were all round numbers, um, they, they all added up to the nut at the bottom, but there was no, there were no, there was no actual, uh, indication that the monies had been spent for that purpose.
Is that something we care about, is that?
Well, I think that's what it's saying right now, is based on receipts from actual expenditures.
I'll, I'll change it to itemized receipts.
Thank you.
They both a different way with that, I was thinking about arts and music council, we never required them to have your receipt for the band that they actually put on stage, right?
Well, they, but they did give us the list, and they, and, and, and there were fees that that group was charging them.
So, what, was there actual receipts that they submitted, that said, here is the band receipt, I mean, at what point do you say, oh, here's the, you know, here's the, the vendor who is selling popcorn, I mean, at what point do you say, we don't need to do that? I mean, to me, it seems, seems pretty-
Well, but they had, they had the, the stages done, I mean, it was, it was all, and, and we were giving them such a small amount of total, you know, they, they collected contributions, it, it, and now they don't do it anymore.
Well, if you recall, one of their problems was truth.
Okay, we, more justify or comment on that comment, um, but, do we really want receipts from everybody, or not, I mean, I guess, they come in here-
We, we want the reimbursement to be limited to actual expenses, and the receipts back that up.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Because, because of-
We're funding regular salaries.
Well, I know that.
Okay, can, can we use a different word, proof of performance, or something like that?
Yeah. Well-
I, I, I'm getting hung up on receipts, I don't know if I wanna be, um, can't be used for travel, does that include, like, if they contracted my boss Larry and his bluegrass band out of, out of Atlanta to come up here, and they submitted a travel charge for the band to get here with that, or is the band charge just a band charge?
Well, how much does he, we're, we're not talking how much money-
Well, how much does he, we're, we're not talking that much money, each organization gets a total of-
But it says you can't use this for travel, so if we're bringing in a band or somebody from the outside, can part of this money be used as the overall expense for travel, it's just saying it can't be used.
That was taken directly from the program that's currently under moratorium.
Right, so again-
You don't want that anymore, we can remove it.
So, again, I'm thinking about the arts and music council saying, hey, we contract all these band guys, and the bands give them a, you know, receipt that says, you know, it was two thousand dollars for the performance, but, I'm, for the travel, do we reimburse her travel?
It's part of the charge, I, I'm, and I, and, and, it's good, it's a very good point, because it's whose travel, you know, are you flying a plane to, you know, whatever, coming in by helicopter, whatever, I, I understand.
Yeah, those, those are my, my kind of three things, the receipts struck me as being a little bit odd, but I don't care, if somebody wants to check receipts, God bless them. Um, but the travel thing caught my eye, and the individual thing caught my eye, to, uh, love somebody to walk in here like Kent and say, I want to hold a room fest up at the Wal Field, and I don't want-
We talked about that, we talked about that, right?
Yeah.
National electricity.
Well, you know, sometimes we forget, we know most of the people that we're talking to, I mean, it's not as if these are strangers, we're not a million population. Um, and so, if we don't know somebody, we know somebody who knows somebody, so I, I, I can't, I don't get hung up, not with this amount of money, and because they're doing something for the village.
Right, I agree, I agree, I just, I just got hung up on the word for travel, because it's kind of limiting in a weird way, and I just thought of that example, you know?
Yes.
We can take that out.
So, so Ken, are you looking to, um, try to put this on the next agenda?
That would be excellent.
So, um-
Do for all the work you did on-
Can you put, uh, the revisions together and get it to manager Jackson, so, put it out there?
So, just in summary, these are the restrictions, we're removing the restriction for individuals, we're removing the restriction for travel, we're removing the line that says, there's a deadline for requests, so that's being taken out. Um, we're talking about itemized receipts instead of just receipts, and we're making sure it's, we say in plain language, it's after the event is over.
And instead of the request by April thirtieth, we're just asking for sixty days from either of you from today, we can have a program.
Sixty days?
Is that a reasonable?
Great idea.
Have time.
Yeah, sixteen days.
And our total nut for budget purposes is?
In the past, it's been thirty thousand, again, it's, we've got a budget coming up, starting May first, we can make it whatever we think is appropriate.
Are you good?
Yep, I'll put this together and send it out to everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your-
Okay, um, village manager's report. Okay, so I will just ask the question, is there any reason to go into executive session now? Nope, okay, somebody make, want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Wow.
Your trustee, second by trustee Micho, roll call, please.
Trustee Micho. Trustee Vrowsky.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned, good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.